All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome. Why don't we go ahead and get started? So we've got three items on the agenda. The watershed report, the second quarterly financial reports, and then council comments and schedule. So it's like we've got a good agenda and manageable and very important topic of watershed management, which I've had the pleasure of serving as the council liaison to. So let me turn it over to Wyatt. And I also wanted to thank the other members of the watershed task force that are here this evening. So thank you all for being with us. It's a very casual discussion at the work session, so I'm going to invite you all up, and please join us. That way, we can hear everybody's feedback and have a good dialogue tonight. Wyatt, I'm going to turn it over to you, and then I'm sure you're going to turn it over to staff.
Well, thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. Tonight, what is before council's request to hear a briefing on the work of the watershed advisory committee, briefing on their product, which is a watershed management plan. On Monday next, on the 23rd of January, you'll be asked to refer this out to boards and commissions, and that will be assuming after tonight's discussion that you concur that it's ready for that. And then with a request the council adopted on February 13th. The watershed management plan is an effort that began two weeks ago, oh, two years ago. I wish it were two weeks ago. A great deal of work has gone into it, but the city council did appropriate funds to put this report together, appointed the membership of the watershed advisory committee, and this is the product now that's before you. In your packets, you had the executive summary and the staff report online is the full, the five white papers that make up the core of the watershed management plan. Bill's going to give a presentation tonight. There are a couple of things that are going to tie into this discussion, and one is being presented right now upstairs by Cindy Mester to the planning commission. That's the capital improvements program. And there are funds in there that the council approved that would come on board on FY13 for stormwater improvements, and the watershed management plan will help provide the policy basis for prioritizing where we're going to spend that money. And it also provides the policy basis for the big federal regulations that are coming down the pike, how we would respond at the local level to those. Those are some of the key points on this. But let me turn it over to Bill, both to introduce our members of the WAC and provide the council with the briefing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a great privilege to be here tonight to talk about this plan, as Wyatt said. We've been working on it for two years, and I'm very glad to be at this point tonight. We have three members of our watershed advisory committee here this evening, Michael Baer and Dennis Samansky at the table, and in the rear of the room, we have Bill Schelsted, as well as Mayor Baruch served on this committee as well. So I guess we have four. And with that, I'm going to walk us through, I've got about 30 slides, and I have been instructed that to be speedy. I'm from the land of slow talkers, so it's kind of difficult for me, but I'll do my very best. I have five objectives for this evening's discussion, but certainly, as you guys see fit, this is your meeting, and I'm here to serve you guys. First, I'd like to, before we dig into the watershed management plan, to talk, I'd like to talk about some current stormwater activities that are outside of the plan. I think these are very important. They should be part of your deliberations as we move ahead, and I'm, I think there's some very good news that I'd like to share with you. Secondly, I want to describe the plan's development. We've taken two and a half years to get here. It needs to be discussed. Want to discuss the key contents of the plan, and then consider next steps, and then open it up for a discussion. So with that, I'll just dive in. If you want to interrupt and ask a question, I'm certainly amenable to that as we move forward. So in terms of current stormwater activities, we have several small capital projects that are ongoing that are significantly funded with outside monies through a small watershed grant. Want to talk about those. We have operational activities. This certainly isn't a comprehensive list, but it is some key items. We do infrastructure maintenance and repair. We deal with our permit obligations. A lot of that happens on a desktop, and a lot of that happens in the field with what we, with actions that we take. We work through development review to ensure that our ordinances are being upheld by the developments that come into the city. And then we're tracking new regulations. And as you'll see, as we move forward, these new regulations with the Chesapeake Bay TMDL or water pollution budget will create quite a burden for the City of Falls Church to bear over the next 15 years. And currently, we're developing our budgets for FY13 and our capital budgets beyond FY13. So in terms of our small capital projects, we have a small watershed grant. It's administered through the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. We're working in three municipal parks in the city, Lincoln, Crosman, and Berman Park, and we will be installing a bioretention and some stormwater infrastructure in those areas to, one, improve water quality that leaves those sites, and, two, to mitigate stormwater flooding that happens in those areas. So those are kind of win-win projects. It's win-win, especially when we get outside monies to do it. The pictures you have before you are not of those three projects, but of a similar project that took place two years ago at the intersection of Buxton Road and Tyson Road in the Broadmont area. And this is where we took up asphalt. We built a bioretention filter or a sand filter in the landscape and then replanted that. This is very similar, plus the stormwater infrastructure, to what we'll be doing in these three parks. We manage our floodplain management program, and I have brought this news to you before, but I think it worthy of mentioning again. We have, we've been a part of the floodplain management program, the National Flood Insurance Program, for its history. In 2005, we entered in a strong way into their sub-program called the Community Rating System. We entered that program as an eight on a scale of one to 10. At an eight, we get, we, for those who have flood insurance in the city, those flood insurance premiums are reduced by 10%. Because we entered five years ago, our program status was up for renewal this year. In that program review, we moved from an eight to a seven. This is unofficial, of course. At this point, we will get the official letter. They say it takes many months to get the official letter, but we are moving from an eight to a seven, and that will bring an additional 5% reduction on flood insurance premiums for our city residents. So I feel like this is a strong program that we have here in the city. We have four dedicated staff members who are pursuing a new credential. It's not a new credential, but it will be for those who get it. We currently don't have this in the city, but we will have four staff members who are pursuing a certified floodplain manager's credential, and that should be completed in early or late March of this year. BMP maintenance. We talked about the project at Tyson and Buxton and the projects at, on our park areas, and we have other ones, and those are municipal-owned water quality, stormwater projects. We have a lot of water quality projects that are owned privately, that were created through our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. We have 71 residential BMPs and 11 commercial BMPs. We have started a program this year where every one of those is inspected on an annual basis. A report is generated, and any deficiencies are noted, and a letter is sent out to the homeowner or property owner who owns that BMP to say, "These things need correction," and we move forward with that. We have, we work on a fiscal year, our permit year and our fiscal year are one and the same. We have done, in the fall, we did all 71 residential BMPs and did our inspection of those. We found out that 44 of those, or 64%, were in good condition. We found the remaining 25 were in need of some level of maintenance, and I'm certainly not prepared to talk about what level of maintenance right now. Some would be minor, and some would be a bigger deal. But nonetheless, letters went out to all of those BMP owners. In the spring of this year, we will go through all of our commercial BMPs, and that's 11 of those. This year, we published, in the, in the early fall, we published a new map book. The city had not had a map book that showed all of its stormwater infrastructure. We had our stormwater infrastructure mapped, but the map that was in Robert Goff's truck might be different than the map that is in my office, that might be different than the map that was in Jason's office. And Jason and Matt Hansen in our office worked with our GIS information, prepared a nearly 100-page map book that covers the entire city. We published that. We have that in our crew leaders, our operational crew leaders' trucks now. We have that on our engineer shelves. We have it down at the yard. So everybody is talking, singing from the same sheet of music, shall we say. So what is that sheet of music? You've seen this picture at the top before. We showed this at the town hall meeting. We spent a good deal of effort, and I don't know the exact dollar figure. Wyatt may know it off his head, but in terms of cleaning storm sewer in the city over the last 10 years, we spent a lot of money on a contractor to clean out debris just like this. The picture here in this office, a little bit hard to see, but that pipe is halfway full of debris that's collected in that pipe. We have bought, and these are pictures today, of our new stormwater vacuum and flusher truck. We had an old one that was many years old, and it was broken far more often than it would run. It needed replacing. These are pictures today of it being delivered in Maryland, and we will have that in-house by the end of the week or the very first of next week, and we'll get that out into the field and start working. So we're excited. So that's debris management. That's taking our, taking debris out of the existing pipes that we have. These are defects. These are, and I'll walk through each of these. These are existing pipes in the ground. The top left corner is a corrugated metal pipe. You can see its corrugations. There is a patch that looks like it's repaired, a catastrophic failure of that pipe. I don't know what has happened, but it has had to be repaired. That repair won't last forever, but it has been repaired. The bottom, you can see a corrugated metal pipe that's collapsing. It's probably close to the joint, the edge of it is at the joint. You see some root intrusion. All of that catches debris as things travel down our storm sewer. And of course, as that collapse gets bigger and bigger, the capacity of that pipe to carry the stormwater we need it to carry is lessened. The top right corner is a concrete pipe, and you can see a longitudinal crack all the way down that pipe. That pipe, it still carries the same amount of water, but it won't last forever. The bottom right corner is also a reinforced concrete pipe, and you can see those big circular arch things in the screen. That's where the pipe is not together. There's a gap between one pipe section and the next pipe section, and those can become big failures. Just this year, at the Northgate Project, I believe that's Jefferson Street and Washington Street that we're looking at the corner of, as they were doing their work, they uncovered a problem that was, that was unknown to us, but it was a big problem. The bottom picture on the left, it's very difficult to see, but right along here is our pipe, and then there's this big gaping hole. We did not dig the soil out of that hole. That soil that disappeared got sucked into the stormwater pipe and was carried downstream. And so this sidewalk, right here, sits on top of, at this time, it sat on top of nothing but air. What became a big concern for us is this is a utility pole that carries a lot of power down, up and down North Washington Street. It was, it was not very secure at the time, and so North, the Northgate Project had to stop all efforts. We had to contact Dominion to get them to come and temporarily hold the pole while we shored up everything underneath it. Now, the good news about all of this, while that's a big inconvenience, is that this particular stormwater pipe was going to be, going to be replaced in more or less the same location when the Northgate Project is through with. But this is not the only place in town that we've got gaps like this that can cause big problems. This was last week on Lawton Street. The picture on your left is what was uncovered. I drove by after dropping my daughter off at the daycare on Cherry Street. I was driving back to the office and noticed that there was, there was water pooling up in, after that rain event last weekend. So I called it into operations, and they sent some guys out to look at it, and this is what they uncovered. They uncovered a pipe that had failed on the top, had been collecting debris in it because that, because of the failure, and they had to repair it. What they've done is they've taken a bigger piece of corrugated metal pipe, and they've laid it over top of it, they've cut the bottom of it off, and they've laid it over top of it and mortared it in. That's going to solve the problem for about nine months. It's not going to be there forever. For us to go back and fix this, we have to go from one side of Lawton Street to the other, from structure to structure, dig that pipe up and put in a new pipe that's tied into those existing structures. This is work that we don't have the capacity to do in-house. This is work that we have to simply pay a contractor to come out and repair this for So wow, those are big deals. So how do we know about this going forward? How can we figure out how we're not surprised about it all of a sudden? And Jason Witstrom, right here beside me, has worked with video that has existed for some time. In the debris cleanup that we talked about earlier, where Apex, a contracting firm, went through and cleaned out debris, at the end of every day, they would video what they'd done, and it did two things. One, it showed that there was no more debris in the pipe. But the second thing it did was it showed us where there were deficiencies. So back up here, these are from those video logs. So Jason, with one of our contractors, GKY and Associates, they have gone through, well, they're not through yet, but they're working on it. This is the area that they've completed so far. They've gone through all of those video logs and taken a point in our GIS system to say, "This is a defect." And in that defect, they've got a lot of description. Part of that description includes the picture of the defect. And then they've, they've worked with all of those defects, and they've taken a decision matrix criteria and been able to rank every pipe in the area they've done so far on a rating between zero and five. Zero being it's in great shape, and five being it's in bad shape. And you can't see what are fives on here, but there are fives in this study area. But this will be able, this will become one of those building blocks, a decision block, so that we can say, "Our stormwater infrastructure is failing in these particular places. We may not have problems today, but we are going to have problems there very quickly, and we need to be prepared to fix them now." So in the analysis so far, we've looked at over 100,000 linear feet of reinforced concrete pipe. Of that, we have found that 17,000 feet have some, some level of deficiency associated with it. That's about 15.6%. And I'm not going to sit here and say that we need to replace all 17,000 feet. I think that, but I think that does give you an idea. These are just big, broad characterizations that we found defects in these areas. Similarly, we have a, we looked at corrugated metal pipe in the same study area, and we found that 22% of what we found there is in need of repair. We know that in general, a corrugated metal pipe has a lot shorter lifespan than does a reinforced concrete pipe. We figure that we've got somewhere between 20 and 30% of our, of corrugated metal pipes citywide, so this is certainly an area of concern as we move ahead. So those are things that we're doing. Those are activities that we're doing, and what I want to do is dive into the watershed management plan, and I want to set us, set the stage for that. So if we're doing all of that stuff, and I would, I would venture to say that that is good stuff that we're doing, why do we need a watershed management plan? And that, this is what I think it is. It's a document, it's a document to guide our stormwater policies as we move ahead. It's a document to help meet our water quality obligations, our big Chesapeake Bay TMDL obligations, our stormwater regulations obligations. And it's a document to objectively approach our stormwater problem areas. So we saw a bunch of areas of concern in that GIS mapping. Those may or may not be problem areas. Those are areas that may not already be flooding. There are longitudinal cracks that still carry water, but haven't yet fully failed on the surface. But we have some problem areas that are addressed in our watershed management plan that are a little, that, that create property problems or safety problems. So in July of 2009, the city council commissioned a 14-member, citizen-member watershed advisory committee. At the same time, there were funds that were allocated, and we, the city, hired AMEC Incorporated, an engineering consulting firm, to work, to work with us to get us to a watershed management plan. They provided expertise. They provided project deliverables. They did a lot of fieldwork. They reviewed all of our existing reports and data. And then we had some city staff that were really focused on it. Beyond myself, there was Jason Witstrom and Kathy Allen. And I'll just take a moment to mention that Kathy Allen is our new public works superintendent.[1242.08][1242.08](APPLAUSE). So the plan is founded on a couple of things. It's founded on objective data. We've reviewed previous work that was done, the 12-year-old watershed management plan, the Dewberry reports, the GKY reports. That's all part of this. There were staff interviews that were conducted, and there was new fieldwork that was done. Excuse me. And then the, the plan itself is guided by the city council vision and long-term strategic plan, as well as the 2005 comprehensive plan. And how did we get there? What we did, and is, there were five white papers that were developed over five different subject matter areas. Stormwater program, stream restoration and monitoring, policies and ordinances, stormwater management projects, and funding options. And then we met with our watershed advisory committee, and we talked about each of those things. We vetted those white papers. We solicited their input with each of those white papers. The plan itself has kind of got three driving goals associated with it. One is to reduce flooding and improve safety and protect property. Two, and this is implicit in a watershed management plan, is to restore and maintain a healthy local aquatic ecosystem. And lastly, to cost-effectively comply with the state and federal water quality and stormwater management regulations. Now, I've mentioned this at least three times in this discussion. The Chesapeake Bay TMDL and these, the watershed improvement plan that is forthcoming, we envision, we don't know this for certain, it's all still morphing along, but as our best guess is, is that's going to cost the city nearly $24 million over the course of the next 15 years. And that, that cost is kind of, it's, it's not front-loaded, it's back-loaded. So we start a little bit slow, and then it, the costs creep up significantly. So inside the plan, there's six chapters. There's an introduction and a purpose, summary of watershed conditions, there's a discussion on the drivers and the analysis of our current policies and ordinances. There are city watershed programs, watershed management strategies, and funding options. So the five white papers provide the structure of the report. In the report, there are recommendations by the watershed advisory committee. Short term, five, less than five years, midterm, five to 10 years, and long term, greater than 10 years. Those recommendations cover about five areas of focus. Our current program or improvements to our program, stream restoration and monitoring, stormwater management projects, policies and ordinances, and funding. So I'm going to go through each of those, and bear with me. So in regards to our stormwater program, recommended that we develop a long-term Chesapeake Bay restoration plan to ensure the cost-effective compliance with the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, to provide adequate funding for system maintenance and rehabilitation, to develop a plan and schedule for comprehensively inspecting the storm drain system to ensure the problem areas identified prior to failure, develop a plan for maintaining publicly-owned stormwater facilities, ensure maintenance of privately-owned stormwater facilities, ensure that the city's GIS system remains a robust tool for making informed, long-term decisions, secure additional resources for public education and outreach, and investigate how to leverage public funds to encourage private investments in our system. So some of those things, we're already taking strong steps in, but they're, they're still in the plan nonetheless. There are four areas that were identified for stream restoration. Trips Run near TJ Elementary, Pearson Branch near Spring Street, Co-Branch near Lee Street, and Four Mile Run between Little Falls and Washington, which is right along the fire The Pearson Branch, excuse me, and the Co-Branch projects are already established. We have identified state and tribal assistance grant funding in the amount of $1.7 million to assist us in implementing both of those projects concurrently. There's been no effort to move a project forward with Trips Run or the Four Mile Run section by the firehouse, but certainly, if anybody's walked down that section of Four Mile Run by the, by the firehouse, there's certainly cause for concern as one looks at the things. The watershed management plan includes stormwater management project recommendations, precisely 11 of them. We started with a list of nearly 40, and they were vetted with city staff. We took citizen complaints that had, that we had seen over the years. We looked at the, the past studies that were developed, and we came up with 40 potentially viable projects. Staff worked with, with AMEC to cull that list down to about 21 projects that were potentially viable projects, projects which we thought, there's some merit in those projects. And they took those projects and went out in the field and gathered some information. They developed some engineering concept plans so they could come up with some prices so that we could work price into our understanding of what was going on. And we developed a set of, of objective criteria that dealt with flooding and safety. It dealt with water quality improvement, and it dealt with cost, and cost per, per unit of each of those things. And we worked to take that list of 21 projects and rank them with objective criteria. Then we took that list, as we saw it ranked, and we met with our watershed advisory committee, and we said, "What do you think?" We vetted that list then, and they moved some things around, and we came up with 11 projects that are our top-ranked projects that have been included in the plan for implementation. It's about $3.2 million worth of projects in our planning-level estimates. That is, we believe that if we could move those projects forward in the next five years, not only would they benefit the city in terms of flooding and water quality, they would also go a long way into helping us meet our expected obligation for our Chesapeake Bay TMDL. As I said, that, that program is backloaded, not front-loaded, so we, it looks like we're, that will ramp up as time goes on, but the first five years, we think we've got it covered with this. Now, I want to, just before we move off of here, we've also, we've talked about all those, the area of stormwater infrastructure that's potentially in need of repair. This is not necessarily that. These are problem areas that we have seen at the surface, or areas for water quality benefit that we can leverage our obligations for our Chesapeake Bay TMDL. So next, we're policy and ordinance improvements. The first was to consolidate the erosion and sediment control ordinance and the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Overlay District ordinance into a single unified stormwater management ordinance. Just before I go on, I'll say that we are diligently working on this as we speak and would probably have a draft in the very near future of this. Secondly, to increase flood prevention tools in the city ordinance associated with our floodplain overlay district. Also, we have been working in-house to try and develop this floodplain management ordinance revision that would be before city council in the very near term as well. To increase the penalties associated for violations of our erosion, erosion and sediment control ordinance, which would soon be the stormwater management ordinance, and for illicit discharges or dumping into our stormwater system. Amend the zoning ordinance to encourage the reduction of impervious surface cover during development and redevelopment, and lastly, adopt policies to better define the scope of city services. This means that, right now, we have a stormwater system, the extent of which, where does that end? Does it end at the curb? Does it go beyond that? Is some of that, is some of our obligation on private property. We have spent, we spent some time last year, and we identified everywhere in the city that we have stormwater easements. So we would say that anywhere that's in our right-of-way, anywhere that's in our, in our easement, that's obviously ours. that's obviously ours. But it gets a little bit gray. There are areas in the city where one property drains onto another that drains onto another, and you have 19 properties that drain to each other before they ever reach a city easement or a city right-of-way. And so, where do we begin? And those questions are out there, and they need to be answered. Those are big policy questions because they cost a lot of money. That's the extent of service. The level of service is something that we're all very familiar with, given our September 8th event, where there was a 90-year event in the city, we had a lot of flooding throughout the city. Should the city have been able to carry a 90-year event? Well, the industry standard is a 10-year event. The difference between carrying a 10-year event and carrying a 90-year event is a whole lot of money. So, where do we stop, and where do we begin? So, this is, both of those are open for discussion, are suggested as policy efforts to try and nail down. And then, the last recommendation is one that I think is probably dear to everyone's heart, is how in the world are we going to fund this? And I want to say quickly that we're not necessarily funding the plan, per se. The plan is helping us meet our obligations, and it's going to cost us whether we have this plan or not have this plan, because we're going to receive this unfunded mandate to deal with the Chesapeake Bay. We have a mandate to manage our stormwater system, and that's not caused by the plan. The plan helps us get us in order to manage that. So, the watershed advisory committee, we had a white paper on it, we had a sit-down meeting, we brought in, with AMEC, they are one of the nation's leaders in terms of setting up enterprise funds or examining stormwater funding, and we brought in one of their experts, Elizabeth Tredway. She traveled to the city and met with our watershed advisory committee, and the watershed advisory committee walked away from, really, a two-meeting effort and said that their recommendation is to build an enterprise fund, which is not really any different than what we have with our water fund or our sewer fund, where all of the expenses, all of our expenditures, and all of our revenues associated with that program are bundled in the same place in the budget. It's just kind of in order, how we're putting it all together. And then, how you fund that enterprise fund is, there's a couple of ways. There's the ad valorem tax, they're simply doing it through the general fund, and it's based on how much your property is. Or, you can base it on impervious cover, which seemed a bit more equitable, because it's based on how much impact that your particular property is going to have on our stormwater system. And so, the watershed advisory committee said, "This is what we recommend. We recommend bundling all of our expenditures into one place in an enterprise fund, and funding that through a stormwater utility fee. That seems the most equitable approach." So, the next steps, as we perceive them, are, one, to distribute the plan as it exists today to boards and commissions with the intent of adopting the plan on the February 13, 2012 city council meeting. Second, to consider the FY13 funding request for stormwater programs. As Wyatt mentioned at the beginning, the FY12 CIP budget showed in the FY13 out-year a $1.2 million allotment for funding for capital improvements for stormwater. We have, the stormwater budget, I mean, the CIP that's being discussed with Planning Commission tonight includes that $1.2 million. We also think that as we look at the operating budget for FY13, we need to consider, do we need to put some money in to do some work that we currently are having difficulty funding? And then, lastly, I think that with the recommendation from the watershed advisory committee, what's in the plan is that city council study the creation of a stormwater utility with the target for implementation in FY14. And with that, I'm done with 31 slides, and I'm open to any discussion. We've got Jason Witstrom, we have members of the watershed advisory committee here, and we have Allison Lorenz in our office, who manages our floodplain program and Chesapeake Bay program, and we have Bob Young, who's walked in, who's also a member of our watershed advisory committee.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Just want to give an opportunity to the members of the watershed management task force to provide any comments they have before we open it up to council. Bob, feel free to come up. And if you'll all pardon my voice, I'm struggling with the call stuff. Bob, can you hit your mic?
Sorry. I haven't been able to attend all of the meetings, but I've attended a fair number of them, and I want to commend Bill and his staff and his contractor for really doing what I think is an outstanding job in a very difficult area and one that's not really very popular or sexy or anything like that, but it's a big problem. I fully endorse the conclusions that everyone came to, particularly with respect to choosing to set up this utility, which I think is very critical for the future of the city, and setting it up on the basis of impervious area as opposed to ad valorem. I think, as Bill pointed out, that's by far the fairest way to do it, and what we're really saying is, if you've got a piece of property that's 100% impervious, as we have a lot of those in the city in the commercial area, you're going to pay a little higher tax than somebody who hasn't paved over his entire property or her entire property. So, I'd like to really urge the council to take this under advisement, pass what's been proposed, and I would ask that very serious consideration be given to doing this funding. We're not talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, but we're certainly talking about tens of millions. But if we do it consistently over a period of 10 or 15 years, we'll be a lot further down the road than we are now.
Thanks, Bob. Other members of the task force? Okay. Why don't we open it up to council questions? Joanne?
Bill, I just wanted to be reminded, are all residents who have property in floodplain areas keenly aware that they do?
I'm going to let Jason fill in the gaps here, but we do send out a notice to all of those people on an annual basis. They're bankers, if they have a mortgage, they're obligated to have a federally-backed mortgage, and most all mortgages are federally-backed, are obligated to have flood insurance premiums, which would show up on their bill. And then, we notify every resident in the city through our environment newsletter all of the details in general about floodplain management. And so, I would like to say, yes. There may be other actions that we are taking. Allison?
Mainly, the letter that goes out to every single resident every year is how we average.
And the letter says what?
Every person in a floodplain gets a letter, saying, "You are in a floodplain. Here are some things you should think about." My phone number's on there, anybody can call.
Anything else, Joanne? Why don't we just go down the line? Ron?
I will say, this is not a unique problem to Falls Church, and it's effectively, you know, my company runs, we have 13 plants in the United States, and almost every location we have now is looking at imposing some sort of fee based on the stormwater leaving the property to pay for these exact kinds of issues. And the interesting thing is, some of the plans that measure it based on estimates of how much water is leaving the property, which sometimes they just go by the roof structure, sometimes they look at the parking lots, some of them allow mitigation of the fees based on if you get rid of the water other ways, whether you do injection wells or rain gardens or other things. So, I don't know if that's a possibility or not here, but I'm guessing some folks are going to ask, particularly some of the commercial folks who have a big motivation to try and mitigate the fee. But if the goal was to stop the water from running off, then sometimes there's some validity there. So, I would suggest maybe we look into that and see what's being done elsewhere as well.
Just a comment, we did talk about that in our watershed advisory committee meeting, and we absolutely think that that's part of the solution. There's a minimum that everybody kind of has to pay, and then we break down from that. There's not the details of what this program would look like, it's just the recommendation that we get there.
I just wanted to thank staff and also the consultant and the rest of the members on the watershed management task force. I think this was very, very well-done in the last two years. A lot of work was done, in my view, seeing other projects and other work with consultants. I think this was one of the best projects that I have seen and was involved with, as far as the thoroughness, how the metrics came up, the thought that went into how each program was scored, making sure that it was equitable and measurable. And I think one of the concepts that's important as council starts diving down into the projects that was raised during the meetings was really trying to make sure that we had the most bang for the buck, so we weren't doing projects that were extraordinarily expensive but had limited public safety benefits, for example. So, it was, how do we identify projects that we can get a lot out of for the money that would be put in if we do, in fact, do those projects? Bill, I just had a couple of questions as I was going through the presentation, just thinking a little bit ahead, as far as funding. I think one thing that would be helpful in discussions with funding is, the way that I see it is that there's almost three different buckets, and tell me if this makes sense to think about it this way. One bucket would be sort of repairs that need to be made to the current infrastructure that we have. Two is meeting the unfunded mandates that we have coming, which you had mentioned are estimated at $24 million. And then, the third bucket would be sort of improving our current, if you will, status quo, not repair, but projects that were outlined, the 11 projects that would be roughly $3.2 million, and I think that those are rough estimates right now. Is that sort of, my understanding, sort of, if I want to conceptualize them as buckets in those three buckets?
I think that is a good way of doing it. I think that the $3.2 million gets us a long way in meeting our Chesapeake Bay obligations.
So, there's some overlap between those two buckets?
And in terms of repair and maintenance, some of those are capital projects, and some of those are operating-level projects, and so, it's kind of two separate buckets because it's two separate areas of the budget.
What are we looking at as far as the repair and the repairing piece, which was shown on the GSI?
We can't say at this point because we haven't finished that. That's just our study area, and we're still working through that. We're going to be done with all of the data that we have in-house right now, we're going to be done with that in probably six weeks. But we believe that there's going to be gaps in that data, that we're going to continue to have to send crews out to shoot a camera through each of those reaches so that we can say with certainty we've touched everything in the city. And we're not quite far enough to be able to even tell you in our current state where we are. That said, we've had, I think we're up to 12 or 14 sinkholes since the September 8th event, and that's a lot. We don't usually see that many. The September 8th event, as it's pulling so much water through the system, it's pulling dirt through these sinkholes and creating problems where we didn't know we had problems before. We had some contractor estimates for some replacement work that was upwards of $70,000 just to repair from these sinkholes.
And I take it that, you know, based on our discussions, and I'm saying this more rhetorically, just for the benefit of other council members, that that aspect of repairs didn't really get factored into a lot of the work that the task force was doing, just because of the timing and that this contract was on a different schedule? So, I think it's just important to realize that they're sort of going in parallel tracks, but we're going to have to take up some of the repairs separately, and we may need to take those up sooner than later on some of this.
Yes, that's exactly right, that this plan has kind of those problem areas that we see on the surface, but it doesn't address the things that we're determining through our GIS analysis.
Bill, just again, as far as timing on the repair aspects, what budget do we think that's going to be part of?
Well, I think that the repair aspect is going to be an ongoing issue moving forward. We need to continue to reinvest in our infrastructure. I think there is an opportunity for discussion in FY13, in the operating budget.
Is that what your question was, that I was going to show up in the FY13 operating budget to fund, like, for the sinkhole repairs or like, come in the CIP?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're continuing to make movement on this, and that we're not putting some of the repairs off into the "let's deal with it later" bucket that may be out-year CIP, based on what we're starting to see and what I've heard tonight, and we may need to think through that and how it impacts the budget this year.
I had to turn in my draft budget to the finance office today, and it absolutely includes moving forward on these issues.
And I guess the one thing that I'll just ask staff and my fellow council members to think about, and I would say that some of the repair issues, we're just beginning to deal with, given the work of the contractor. So, I think I came in prepared a little bit for the bigger projects, et cetera, but it sounds like there's some repair issues that we're going to need to be briefed further on and get a better handle on, and I think those are going to be part of the budget discussion. So, it may make sense to have a discussion before budget gets underway, just so we have an understanding of what types of projects, what the issues are outside of tonight, because those may, may or may not be immediate, we just need to get a better sense of that, I think. And I'm not predicting one way or the other, I'm just trying to get my head around those as well. Dave?
Thanks a lot. Thank you to everyone who's worked so hard on this issue. This is an impressive body of work that covers a broad range of topics, technical issues, policy issues, and tax issues, which really brings me to the process moving forward. I want to get going on this as quickly as we can, but I do think that we need to give our citizens more than two weeks to look at what it is we're proposing. We are, after all, talking about a systematic plan that's going to affect everybody, and one which will, in essence, bind the city to a course for the next decade or so. So, what I'd like to see between now and when we take final action on this is a town hall meeting with our citizens to brief them, just as we did a town hall meeting that illustrated the problems. And I want to make sure that everybody knows all the ins and outs of this report. I think our citizens are going to want that, and I don't want to move prematurely. I want to push the issue along, but I do want to give our citizens a fair opportunity to understand the magnitude of the problem, and I think we certainly heard that, and also to understand the component parts and to understand the cost of dealing with them. So, I want to see a more, and I won't use the term transparent, because the process is transparent, but a more fulsome process to engage our citizenry, and I think in turn, that will lead to a more smooth movement in the kind of direction that I think we need to move, which is in the direction of this report. Secondly, my approach to this is somewhat colored by a citizen who went through an awful lot of city bureaucracy over several years to just build a wall in his backyard. And I've mentioned it several times to the city manager, and it was not a citizen-friendly process, and I think citizens are going to react very negatively if they don't get, if they can't enable, they can't be enabled to move through the process of what they need to do expeditiously and without unnecessary expense and hiring a lot of consultants at their own expense to do the job. So, I won't be specific with the names and address, but I will certainly provide that to the city manager. So, I want to be assured that what comes out of this is a kind of process that our citizens can move through so that they can get the job done quickly and efficiently. The third issue is the dollars and cents. I've heard a lot of numbers thrown around tonight, 25 million over what period of time?
15.
15 years. Okay, I raised that on Saturday during a town hall meeting, and I got a bunch of blank stares from our representatives in Richmond. So, I need more of a political, public policy context to this whole Chesapeake Bay funding issue. I've been told, for example, that in Richmond, they've sold out the local governments in favor of big agriculture. So, that's the kind of thing I want to get to the bottom of, because part of this issue may be something much larger than ourselves, and while I want to do what's responsible, I also want to know what other people ought to be doing on this, that represent us in Richmond and in Washington and elsewhere. Again, though, I've heard $3.2 million, which is, if you figure the typical bond, that's about $300,000 a year in additional interest payments, which is a little more than one cent on the tax rate, between one and two cents. So, that seems like that's something pretty reasonable, but then, when you talk about 25 million, that doesn't seem so reasonable to me. So, the numbers, I think it's very important to get people on the same set of numbers from the beginning, otherwise, you're constantly... Otherwise, you're constantly going to be dealing with people who take a piece of that, they don't understand the context of it, and certain arguments and rhetoric surrounds various pieces of it. So those, those are some of the points I'd like to make. Finally, the funding, I'd be interested in knowing the range of funding options we have to us the most efficient way. For example, interest rates now are probably as good as they'll ever get. So maybe we ought to think about being more ambitious rather than less ambitious upfront. Finally, in connection with that, I am interested in the maintenance of effort. I don't want to create an enterprise fund that in essence pays for what otherwise would have paid, been paid out of the general budget, just to have the general budget grow in less fundamental and critical areas. I don't want to trigger that either. So I'm interested in the maintenance of effort there to understand what we would otherwise be funding, maintain that, and then build on that what we need to do to do the job as our citizens in this commission and others have indicated. So those are my initial reaction to, to this in, in, in the various areas. So I'd be interested in a reaction tonight, but there's an awful lot here that I want to give our citizens an adequate opportunity to understand what it is that we're doing, why we're doing it, what its costs are going to be, and what ultimately we're going to see at the end in terms of value to our citizens. And I think once we make that case through a town hall and other ways, we'll have a lot of community support for this. Thanks.
Lawrence, before we turn to you, I just want to kind of get a sense, just so councils all on the same page. Just looking at the, the motion, it would be a motion to refer to planning commission, environmental services council, and to the public for comment. So what's being proposed is that council wouldn't take action at the next meeting, but just refer it out. Certainly, part of that could be for a town hall. And we may want to think about the February 13th date, whether that's sufficient time. So that, that's what's being proposed. It's not adoption because I don't think council's there as far as adopting. Certainly, I'm not.
And really, a two-week period for public exposure of something this significant, or two and a half, or three weeks, whatever it is, seems to me not being fair to the public. As much as an advocate as I am for moving forward, I think we'll get better support from people in all elements of this if we take, if we take a little bit of time to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have their say and they understand more fully what we're dealing with. And we have a set of numbers on one sheet that explains exactly what it is we're doing.
So it's not like part of the motion is workable, but we need to think through the, the February date. Why don't we turn it to Lawrence and then we'll circle back.
Thank you. I want to also thank you all for all the work that you've done. And this has been a long process that is finally seeing something on paper of actual options, of things that we can potentially act upon. A lot of the maintenance things that have happened, I think, have been kind of good Band-Aids, but we're at a point now, after the storm this past fall, that we need to, to make some pretty big efforts to improve the storm drainage issues that we have in the city. And I do agree with Dave. I think we do need to get a little bit more of a public buy-in because we are going to be talking about possibilities of enterprise zones and adding to the tax rate to do these things. And I think there is sufficient enough public interest in this. But I think the more opportunities that we give them to, to comment on, on these different proposals, which I think are all very good and have good foundations to why we need to look at them. But just having that buy-in early opposed to just putting it out there for us to pass and then down the road, we'll get some potential kickback on that. It's better for us now to, to get that buy-in from the public. I do think we've kind of kicked this down the road as long as we can and that it's time to put forward the effort to actually repair and, and get us in a much better position than we are right now, which as we've seen, some of the problems that are there are safety hazards, particularly with sinkholes and things like that. The one that you had the picture up across the street from where Councilmember Barry and I live at near there, that you're walking down the street and, you know, you never know, is something like that with a utility pole that's not fully grounded in, you know, things like that could happen on a pretty busy stretch of, of road in the city. So I think it's definitely now time for the maintenance of these different things to, to happen and just get the public's buy-in. But I think the buying will be, will be there for this particular project. But thank you all very much. This has been a very long process and you all have given a lot of time to this. And I think it's time for us to kind of take this on and do the right thing for the long-term project success of, of the city.
Okay, why don't we go through again? Ron?
I was looking at the wording here.
Ron, can you?
Trying to clarify again. This says review out for final adoption on February 13th. So that means all the public comment takes place between now and the 13th. I'm just trying to clarify what we're talking about.
Yeah, that was what was intended in the drafting of the motion. And so the comment is two weeks isn't enough. The, so the, we could either push to the 27th or we could push to March 12th. If council could give us feedback as to which one you would prefer of those two dates, and then we will work on the sort of other ways to engage the public beyond the sort of the, the basics of the board and commission referral. But a town hall meeting, we've got the content that's ready to go. And so it's really just, we've got the platform. It's just a way to, with the content now, we just need a good way to engage.
No, I think the content-wise, this was excellent. Drilling down on some of the, thinking about it as dollars and cents would be really helpful. As far as my suggestion, as far as when we would take this up, I'd like to take it up before the budget's presented by the city manager or the city manager's recommendation for the budget. And also provide staff enough time in between when we would actually take this up and discuss it before the budget becomes all encompassing. And the budget, Wyatt, is you present that on?
March 12th.
March 12th. Okay. So working back from that, when would you propose, Wyatt, that we take this up?
The other option is the February 27th.
Council thoughts on that?
And the, and the meeting would be on the Saturday or something?
Yeah, we'd have to work out the details on that.
So that adds two weeks almost.
I think that's, that gives it the additional exposure, which I'd like to see. And I don't see a reason for taking longer than that. I think we'll know during that period of time, don't you?
Okay, so that, I had sort of three issues. I may be missing a couple, but that, that addresses the, the need for full review and the town hall. The next item I had is sort of what I'm labeling as full picture and that's sort of the bucket format that I laid out, thinking about it in buckets and in terms of costs. And this ties into, and piggybacks off something David mentioned about enterprise funds. You know, and again, I'm not prejudging my views about it, but sort of some of my thinking, and again, this is very much dependent on what the project costs are. It's one thing to say as far as the enterprise fund, which, which I do support in concept, so please don't misconstrue what I'm saying. But it may make sense for an enterprise fund to say meet the new projects, the 11 projects, and also the, the quality improvements that we're going to have to do that are the mandates. A little bit more leery of trying to deal with, say, repairs via an enterprise fund. That's where I get a little, I need to think through that a bit more. So, but, but those are all issues that we're going to have to talk about. And really kind of want to start getting a holistic sense of this because if we need to start thinking about a referendum to get moving on these from a budgetary standpoint because it exceeds our policies to pay for some of these projects, I want to get it out to the public and I'll allow John sufficient time to get that together and for council to take action, for the court to order the referendum and the 20 million things that we have to do. Because again, there's council policies that would kick in. And again, that's going to all be based on getting a holistic picture of what the costs, costs are. And again, you know, I just don't want to delay on some of the critical items that we have to do. And just we need some staff help. I'm trying to figure out what those kind of critical items that, that we would need to do sooner than later are. And certainly, if they need to happen now, we need to know about it and plan for it. And if they exceed our funding levels, then, you know, we just need to be prepared to put it into a referendum if they go through our policy limits. So. Your mic, please.
Sir, I'd just like to request that among the referrals, that it go to the Chamber of Commerce so that, because the enterprise fund impacts the business community.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, and I think that's, and I think there's other civic organizations like that that we'd want to hear from as well. So we can work on making sure that it goes to their people, but the chamber absolutely makes sense. Other council members? Did I, did I miss anything in my attempt at summary? Dave, I know that you made several points. I wanted to make sure that I captured them in some fashion or another.
Yeah, it's getting the numbers, getting an agreed-to set of numbers really laid out so that there isn't a lot of argument over what the basis is. Because that way, if we're all dealing with the same numbers, then I think you can move through the process more efficiently. But I've heard just tonight, different pieces, and I'd like to see it all together.
Yeah, well, we've had to, it's been a moving target and we don't know what the final number is yet from the EPA regs. They're still wrestling, going on over that. And, and how the city can go about meeting its obligations, that's, there's some internal work that we've done where we think that we, we actually have some ways we could do it that would lower our costs. So that's when Mr. Hicks talks about backloading it. We think there's some things we can take credit for that we've, we've, we've done on the, on the sewer, sanitary sewer side, but we can go into more detail on that. So I don't think we actually can deliver you solid numbers. But what I think we could do is frame up the issue a little bit more clearly than it has been for our communication with our delegation. There's been a lot of work at the regional level, but it's all been reactive. We've been, you know, having sort of these terrifying, terrifyingly expensive scenarios laid out for us, saying this is going to happen to you.
I'm terrified too, so we're all part of that.
And in region, in reading all of the regional legislative programs, no one is speaking very clearly about this. And so we need to do a better job on that. So we'll work on that.
Great. Anything else? Just, and as far as that goes, I just don't want the city of Falls Church to be the example of the city that gets fined. So this should not be an operating principle for us. And I sort of say that in jest, but I think we're making great strides in dealing with some of these difficult issues. I don't know where other localities are. I know in some of the mayors and chairs meetings, everybody's sort of like, what are we going to do? And nobody's sort of figured it out. But I just think that we need to be on the cutting edge and really making efforts to tackle the problem. That many localities, again, as Ron said, are not alone in this endeavor to meet some of the unfunded mandates. Anything else? Anything else by our, our fine citizens this evening? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And I think this was great work and thanks for all of our citizens who have participated so far. And we'll be calling upon you for assistance as, as we move this process forward through the public and the comment periods. So thank you.
Next up is the second quarter financial report. And Richard LaContra will come up to the table and send that to the council.
I presume, Mr. Mayor, if I might, that Mr. LaContra will not terrify us with more bad news?
He'll let Bill do that.
Well, the, the theme actually of the year is that all of the, all the scary stuff is on the expenditure side and Bill's a big part of that story. So. But not the only part, for sure.
Sir, did you do your reading? All right. Good evening, council. There is nothing scary about this report. The six months ended December 31st have shown continued progress with our revenue and meeting our targets or exceeding them. As indicated in the report, your personal property taxes are a half a million higher than budgeted. That bodes well for our putting together the FY13 budget. Sales taxes are also running 194,000 ahead of budget, 158 ahead of last year's collections. But I caution you that a lot of it is attributable to BJ's being online for full year and we do have some contractual obligations that we need to keep in mind. So we are looking at the contract language and preparing for that event. Meals taxes ahead of budget targets by 119,000 and that's consistent with the year-over-year collections. We did have one problem area. It was other taxes. It does not significantly impact the current year's budget, but there is a difference between the collections this year and the collections last year. It's about 236,000. I would say that almost 140,000 of it is attributable to one taxpayer that paid multiple years' taxes last year. So that reduced the amount that we're actually collecting when compared to last year. All right, we had a taxpayer that paid more than one year taxes in, in the same year.
For past years?
Yes, yes.
So that the FY11 number is larger?
It's larger than, right. But we did not include it in our budget projection. So you'll notice that the other tax line is down about 9,000 for the six months. That's livable as opposed to 236. In terms of the expenditures, the only thing that we are keeping an eye on, as I've indicated each, in each month's report, we, we are looking at the interjurisdictional agreements. The good news is that while the prisoner count was up in November, we know now that it is down in December. And we've attributed that to a winter cycle where the count goes up and down. So there's no concerns there. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I want to give Joanna an opportunity as a member of the Budget Finance Committee to comment.
Yeah, Richard and I had an opportunity to, to go through the numbers in, in some detail and, and I would agree with him that everything looks, I think, solid. I think Richard and his staff have done a great job of buttoning down the numbers, getting closer and closer to, you know, to good data. Not that there was bad data, but, but getting, getting more refined data. Again, I would, I would caution as we look at these good numbers, and I'm, I'm always happy to celebrate good numbers, that we listen to Richard's point about, about the good news being, you know, organic growth and appropriate organic growth that does signal positive economic trends versus more money simply because it's higher fees for current services. And so I think Richard has been very careful and cautious in his language. And I would just caution council to, to take that on board, that, that the numbers are higher for two very important reasons. One, because we're, we're charging people more money for the same service. But two, because there is, there is good, good data that suggests that there is positive economic growth. The, the other thing that, that I caution council to think about again, and I, I thank Richard for being explicit in his language, is that underspending is, is not necessarily a good thing. Underspending can mean that things have been deferred or that projects aren't going, aren't going forward as planned. It doesn't necessarily mean that there is real. It doesn't necessarily mean that there is real, that there is a real reduction in expenses so much as things have not gone online or things or projects or contracts have been delayed. And so, we just need to be cautious about that number. And last but not least, I was very interested when I talked to Richard about the seasonality of jail costs and prisoner counts, and I was unaware of that, of that dynamic, and now I'm alive to that, to the issue.
So was I until this morning.
To the issue of the seasonality of arrests. So, I thought that was kind of interesting. But I thank, I thank Richard and his staff for being careful and exact in their presentation. So, I feel very good about the numbers.
Thanks, Johanna. All right, why don't we go down the line? Ron?
Richard, just a couple of questions. I know in our last couple of reports, some of the increase that we've seen as far as sales taxes has been attributed to BJ's. As compared to sort of what we had anticipated BJ's revenues to be, how's that project done? And if you're not prepared to answer it today, we can get a report on it.
I'm not prepared to answer it. We get sales tax numbers in bulk. I don't know that I would even get access to how it's broken down. Generally, if you do get a breakdown, it's only by industry. It may help you to identify a specific business, but in order for us to get the information we need for our contractual obligations, we have to get it from BJ's.
Right. I know that given our agreement with BJ's, we have to get it as an item for BJ's. Wyatt, is that something that perhaps you and Tom can discuss and just let us know whether it's on target with what we anticipated or if it's way off or if it's doing great? It would just be good to assess that at some point if it's not a huge lift.
The, I will.
Your mic.
I will see to what extent we can find out at this point. The agreement will be effective on, in other words, we'll have a full year's agreement on June 30th. And so, what I was planning to do was after that point, then we get the data from BJ's, and in September, after they've been audited, is when the payment would be made of the reimbursement of taxes. That's per the letter of the agreement. So, I'm not sure that we'll actually be able to get the data until that point. For a budgeting purposes, we're going to assume the maximum liability, and that's based on these numbers. Our sales tax receipts have jumped well over the 10% that we forecast that BJ's would do alone. So, we know that there's economic activity that's happening beyond BJ's, but we're assuming that BJ's, for budgeting purposes, until we have a year under our belt, is going to get the full payment.
No, that makes sense. So, we'll just defer that, and if I ask you again, just remind me that we had this conversation.
All right. Thank you.
And it sounds like the best time to do that, then, is once the agreement reaches its one-year mark. And then, the next question that I have is, Johanna's talked about, you know, kind of getting a sense of that organic growth and where is that coming from? Might correct that it's coming from meals taxes would be one area that it's coming from organically?
Yes.
Because that, I don't think we've changed the rate on.
No, we didn't.
So, real estate, obviously, we did, so.
And we've tried to break out some of that for you. If you look at the revenue sheet, there are seven sets of notes, and we're, we, in note five particularly, and note six, we try to identify what's due to an increase in assessment, what's due to increase in tax rate.
Very good.
So, $300,000 for personal property, that's relevant for FY13 budget development. The tax rate increase is now baked in, and that's not organic.
Right.
Right.
Tax policy.
Right. So, where are we actually seeing organic growth then?
Meals. Meals tax, property tax, personal property tax, and the real estate.
That's not as large.
B pole is still open. Those bills don't go out until March, so I'm anxiously awaiting what they will look like.
Great. Thanks, Richard. Dave?
To get a really full picture of where the overall financial trends are for the city, this is very important. We also need to know, however, where all of our costs are going, all of our public service costs, including school costs. And when we talk about what our target ought to be for growth in the future, what we, sorts of things we want to encourage, for example, meals, every dollar in meals tax doesn't bring a lot of public service costs with it. Some, but not a lot.
Correct.
Likewise, personal property tax, probably unless it's automobiles and suggests more people with other costs that they bring to the system. Real estate property, however, can look very, very good if you just look at the increased taxes, but very, very bad if the increase in property taxes reflects a significant increase in public service costs, mostly school costs. So, I'm trying to get more of an understanding about net costs and which come with offsetting expenses so that the growth or even the maintenance of a certain level of taxes in reality may be producing a level of costs that exceeds its value.
Right.
So, maybe help us understand that from an analytical standpoint, because I would like to use this as a tool to drive our development. What do we want to be? What do we need to have? What do we need to generate?
Right.
You know, where should this community move to maintain its long-term net financial sustainability? And again, if you only look at one half of the picture and you don't look at the other half of the picture, then you could well be deceiving yourself. Because theoretically, if, to maintain real estate taxes or to increase them, you just build a bunch of stuff. But it really depends on what is the stuff that you're building in terms of the additional costs that they bring.
Right.
So, maybe if you could do a little bit of analysis and help us understand that.
All right.
Because one of the things that I'm interested in is looking further ahead. What do we want this community to be in 20 or 30 years? What do we need to have from a revenue standpoint? What's, and then take that larger into the regional context. With Tyson's Corner mushrooming, what's our role? And where can we, within our context, maximize our tax revenue on a net basis, not just on a gross basis?
Right.
So, does that make sense? Am I, you know, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, there's a couple of ways that it can be approached. I'm taking what you're saying to heart. I will look at the sales tax issue because generally, your sales tax isn't, is spread fairly evenly both inside and outside the community. It's, you know, people passing through, how much tourist traffic you generate, same thing with your meals tax. Personal property tax is a little bit different. In terms of development, I would venture to guess that if you have multiple-family housing or even single-family housing, we have large families, that doesn't have as great a positive effect as a business would. We only have people that come to work and go home.
Right.
So, we can look at that.
So, it's understanding this in a way that will help us direct our, help us set our future direction. I keep thinking that maybe our future is to be the non-Tysons Corner, the place where businesses that are not major national chains but are beginning or are regional chains or, I mean, if you can get some national, great, but that generally requires huge areas and whatever. But how do we become a place where people who don't want the Tyson's Corner, who want a real community with real history, with real cultural events, arts, whatever? How can we, how, in essence, how do we create our niche going into the future? And a key piece of that is solid economic analysis. What generates revenue, net revenue, not just gross revenue versus public service cost offsets?
Right.
So, anyway, thanks a lot.
All right. We will look at that.
Lawrence?
Just one, thank Richard for getting this report to us. It numbers looking good, but as we said, it gives us a little bit more of a cautious optimism that some things are moving in the right direction, but some of the analysis Dave was talking about, I'm interested in because I think in the long-term viability and success of the city is going to be dictated by what type of development that we're able to bring into the city and what's going to be, puts us in a position to know how to go forward with developers to negotiate of what's going to be best for us in the long run and have a little bit more of a solid ground as we move forward with those talks and negotiations with them. But this definitely, you know, gives us a pretty good, strong footing of where we're moving into this budget season. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lawrence. All right. Anything else by council members? All right. Thanks, everybody. And why don't we take a look at the calendar, then? Anybody going to be out coming up?
Mr. Peck is going to be somewhere.
He's going to be somewhere on the 17th.
January 30th? So, 30th you?
30th you would be out, Ron?
I would be out on the 20th, 27th, February. Depends on how the union negotiations go.
Okay.
Kind of whooping I won't be.
Wyatt, I just, on the meeting for January 23rd, I think we're going to add the watershed plan to that.
I'm putting that in right now.
Dave, any, anything from, are you on the calendar?
No, I'm pretty good. February 6th. More complicated, but I can clarify, yeah.
Lawrence?
I'm good right now.
You're good right now?
Yeah.
Okay. I take it folks are here for February 6th. We've got a important date, then, on a closed session.
Yep.
All right. Very good. Anything else? All right, Wyatt?
For the watershed plan referral to commissions, would the council like, we're going to have the Chamber of Commerce, would the council like any other Vipis?
I was thinking Vipis.
Yeah, Vipis.
They have a long, long.
Yeah. Any other community organizations?
Do we assume that tree commission are involved in that?
The trees.
Yes, the trees.
Yeah, the trees are part of the story, for sure.
Are we meeting, or are we missing any other kind of environmental organizations that would handle it?
Again, ESC is already, we'll do a screw-up, but you want them all? You want it to be a conference?
Yeah. I mean, it's major issues, so.
And by Monday night, we'll have, we'll send out a plan to council to what our council strategy would be.
That's great.
And Wyatt, I think one that, you know, just looking back at my notes that we missed on that, I think Dave also asked for, you know, enterprise, an enterprise fund was one option. I mentioned referendum. There may be other funding sources that are out there. So, to the extent that those are out there, I'm just going to get staff's thoughts on what the options are.
Could I clarify that the March 15 meeting?
I beg your pardon. The March 15 meeting, is that the only one we have with school board and planning commission? Do we have another?
No. That's, that March 15th meeting is a tradition that we have. After the presentation of the budget, on the 15th, you hear principally from the CFO on the big picture financial, what's the financial big picture? So, the council has that data set to gauge the spending requests with. So, that's joint with the school board to make sure they hear that at the same time.
Okay.
And then, we haven't done all of the work session planning yet as to which dates the school board would come to the council to talk about their spend, their budget request.
Ah, okay, great.
So, we need to plug all those dates in.
Great. And there's a liaison meeting Thursday night at 8:00. So, are they going to?
Thursday?
Thursday morning at 8:00. Did you, ah, we need to.
So, there's, you're sitting there at 8 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
It's Thursday AM. Why did I think it was Thursday PM?
I don't know. I've got tree commission, I've got ESC, I've got COG.
It may have been confusing. I noted in my email out that the school board's meeting that morning at 7:30, and you all might have assumed that was 7:30 PM.
And I think both Susan and, no, now I remember it was the morning. I don't know what I was thinking.
I don't know why they're meeting at 7:30 AM, but they've got some special issue and it's supposed to be real quick and then.
I think it's their appointment meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a hard stop at 9:15 at the latest.
All right.
All right. Anything else, Kelly?
We're doing an EDC meeting this Friday.
Yes.
We are. Good.
Is that at 8:00?
8 o'clock.
Yeah, the whole objective is to make Mr. LaConde even happier, which in turn makes us even happier in terms of generating revenue, yes.
Yay.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, counsel.